I think you can start, Andreas.
Okay, I was gonna say, welcome, good evening, everyone.
Good evening.
Hold for me, please. It took a second to get the stream going, we're just getting started now.
I think you can start, Andreas.
Okay, you are all.
Thank you. Thank you. Okay. Good evening, welcome to the Town of Notting Conservation Commission for September fifteenth, 2020. First call to order, Ms. Gibbons, please call the roll.
And then Connaughton III?
Here.
John Bashan?
Here.
Philip Locke? John Cassa Santa?
Here.
Kathleen Marie Clark? You're muted. Here. Pardon? Conway? Richard Laverrier? Alan Paskowicz?
Here.
Andrea Sado?
Here.
Max Turjan?
Here.
Okay, point of order, I am going to seat Commissioner Ancona for Mr. Block, Commissioner Block, and then we can seat Commissioner Turjan for Commissioner Laverrier. Noted?
Yes.
Okay. Continue on to item three, public participation on non-agenda items, each speaker limited to two minutes. Do we have anyone online? James?
We have, actually, we have NCTV, one of our panelists, and one of our liaisons, I'm moving them over right now. At this point, it looks like just NCTV on the attendees' side.
Yeah, I believe Ms. Foley is speaking later.
Is she speaking, or is she doing the streaming for NCTV?
I believe she's gonna also be speaking later when Commissioner Clark has a discussion.
Okay. I guess at that point, we can move forward at that point, then.
Thank you. Moving on to item four, acceptance of minutes from the regular meeting of August eighteenth, 2020. Are there any additions or corrections for the commissioners?
Do I raise my hand?
Commissioner Clark?
Yes, on page eight, at the bottom, Mr. Hinckley speaks, and it's not really a correction, but there's some language in there that I can't understand. The last sentence, for example, I wonder if Mr. Hinckley could look at his paragraph. I just was confused by what that meant, and I didn't know if there was an error that he could fix, or if we just leave it like that.
I'm trying to find my copies of the minutes, because I typically don't have them.
Which page did you want? I have it on the screen.
Hold on, I got it.
Page eight, page eight.
Uh, further, almost to the bottom of the page.
Yeah.
There, where it begins invasives.
Yep, I'm reading it right now.
They told that invasives will be identified and removed along the area that the original permit was deemed. That paragraph?
The first-
We could say along the easterly side of the pond. Does that clarify it for you?
That would be fine, it's really the final sentence. I thought that was, I didn't quite know what that meant, but it was the last sentence that I, or the last two sentences that I, I could not make head or tail of.
Nothing on the westerly side, I'm sorry, for me. There was nothing you guys permitted on the westerly side, but you did allow them to trim back to keep the path open. So that was what that original permit said. If that isn't clear, that's what the-
Uh, I think it's the word always, nothing on the westerly side at prior permitting was allowed to be cut, or it-
Correct.
It sounds like it's saying you couldn't cut it, and it's also saying you could always cut it.
Can I say something? I think, sorry, see, I, I think there's a period in there that doesn't belong in there. It should say westerly side at prior permitting was always allowed to be cut in that area. That will be identified and re, that will be identified and removed. I think there's an extra period in there, by mistake.
Okay.
Does that work?
So I think that works.
All right, I guess when, when all is said and done, I just wanna know what was allowed to be cut and what isn't allowed to be cut going forward. That, it was the, not the words, but what it meant.
All right, so for clarification, the original permit that we, as discussed, the easterly side was what you guys permitted to be cut from the bridge at the falls to the bridge at the south end. The westerly side, the only, nothing was allowed to be cut, but trimming was allowed to keep the pathway open and clear for pedestrian traffic.
Okay. So it was the, uh, can you clarify the, what you just said about the two bridges? That was helpful, but I'd like to be able to write it as you said it.
So from the bridge at the falls-
Okay.
Easterly and southerly to the bridge at the south end on the east side, that was where the cutting was allowed.
Okay.
It was, was up to be identified and cut. On the westerly side, only trimming was permitted to keep the path clear and open for pedestrians.
Okay. Thank you, I understand now, yes.
May I? Commissioner Bashant?
Yeah, so that's a little confusing, the bridge to the bridge, and I did talk to Bill last night, and he mentioned the same terminology, but clearly, that's part of the western side. I mean, if you, everything, if you went clockwise from the bridge at the falls around, isn't that considered the western side? I mean, the bridge is on the western side, or?
That was the terminology that was the way it was permitted, you know, before I was here, before I was here, before I was doing it. So that, that's the way they've always used. From the northerly bridge, easterly and southerly, to the southerly bridge.
So the only strip that would be not touched would be between the bridges, the short, the short span between the bridges.
I'm not sure what you're talking about, there's no short span between the bridges.
Well, if you go one way, bridge to bridge, it's three quarters of the pond. If you go the other way, it's one quarter of the pond, not even.
Again.
Unless I'm confused, but I heard that term last night from, from Bill, and I was a little bit, a little bit taken back.
We're probably getting a little off track, all we're trying to do is correct the minutes right now.
Correct, I was going to interject, please, so let's-
I can discuss that when I, later in the communication.
Item, okay, so as far as the minutes are concerned, Kathleen, are you satisfied with the language? Ms. Gibbons, please reply if you're, you're good with the correction.
I am good with the correction. It will be on, it will be on, I noted in the meeting minutes.
And I'm also happy with the correction, as long as we're gonna discuss the meaning later.
It will be discussed.
Yes.
Thank you.
Any other corrections or additions?
Give me one moment. I'm flipping pages to get there, and it is page fifteen. At the top of the page, there is a long paragraph by Mr. Hinckley, and on the third line, it says, minor trimming around the two ponds because they're not super bowl.
Great question, no. Why don't we just strike because they're not super bowl? I think that would work.
That sounds great.
Let's strike that from the record, Ms. Gibbons, that clause there. Because they're not super bowl. We're gonna strike that from the minutes?
Yes, sure, of course.
Any other additions or corrections from the commissioners?
Yeah, I, I still have another, if that's okay. Yes, on page seventeen, I'm sorry, Mr. Hinckley, it's you again.
Oh, man, me again.
Right, right in the middle of the page, there is a paragraph, and it says, they were just working with the existing areas, they had openings, and if they could winded them.
Probably widened.
Widen them.
Would do what?
So they had a small opening, and then they removed the invasives, they made it wider, so they-
Wider, okay.
Yep.
Great. I think that's it, but let me just flip. Yes, thank you very much.
All right, any other corrections or additions, deletions from the commissioners? Let me stand the group real quick. Seeing none, may I have a motion to accept the meeting minutes as amended?
So moved.
For September fifteenth, 2020, who is that speaking? Oh, sorry, Max Turjan. Commissioner Turjan, voted by, motion by Commissioner Turjan, I need a second.
John Bashan, second.
Second, and my Commissioner Bashant, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions? Meeting's, minutes passed. Continuing on now with item five, new business, application twenty twenty dash fifteen, five fifty Cedar Street for a sidewalk in the Upland Review Area, owner, state of Connecticut, applicant, Dakota Partners Incorporated, twelve sixty-four Main Street, Waltham, Massachusetts, oh two four five one. Will the applicant please step forward and identify themselves?
Andreas, may I just give a short preamble here? This application is before you tonight because Dakota Partners is adding sidewalk to their pre-approved project, so this is a different permit, different application, they're extending sidewalk, as you can see, from their site, westerly to the, the access road that goes off of Fen Road into the area where the Starbucks currently is. So it's the same engineer, Mr. Walter, will be presenting for the applicant this evening.
Sure, thanks, Eric. For the record, Will Walter, professional engineer with Alfred Benison Company, and I've got Mark Palott is also with us. He is representing Dakota. Little bit of background, five fifty Cedar Street, on the right side of the, the page is a three-building residential development that was approved before this commission back in the fall of two thousand eighteen, and there was some work done in the Upland Review Area. Subsequent to that, we have received site plan approval for that, that project as well. One of the conditions of that approval is that we are gonna work with the state of Connecticut to construct sidewalks on the north side of Cedar Street from five fifty Cedar Street, our development, west over the, there's, there's a railroad bridge, then right after that, there's a bridge over a stream. As you continue west, there's a bridge over the fast track, and then before Fen Road, there is an, an access road that goes back down to the fast track, so we're proposing to construct a sidewalk from our site down to that, that driveway entrance. Not all of the, we're not putting new sidewalks, that entire length, probably about a third of it already has sidewalks, and we are filling in the gaps with those sidewalks. So we've been working with ConDOT because it's in their right-of-way, and we've come up with a solution that's acceptable to ConDOT. We met with the members of the planning department in the Planning and Zoning Commission this morning, just to kind of bring them up to speed as to what the design, what the design has been presented before ConDOT, and what they've accepted. So the Planning and Zoning Commission and the, and the town planner are in the loop, and essentially, if you guys all know what that's like out there, on the north side of the sidewalk, there's probably five to six to seven feet, but from the edge of the curb to a guardrail, and then on the other side of the guardrail, there's a slope, a significant slope down to the really large wetland system on the north side of Route one seventy-five, and it also was on the south side as well. So we're before this commission because we are technically in the Upland Review Area, per the GIS wetland map. So from a regulatory standpoint, we're in the Buffalo, the, the Upland Review Area. We're not disturbing any, any soils because we're, you know, we're twenty or thirty feet up above that, that, that actual wetlands, and we're up in ConDOT's right-of-way, right next to Route one seventy-five, and we're not proposing any, any retaining walls or any fill to the north of that slope, we're not proposing anything, we're just, everything we're doing is gonna be going between the curb and that existing guardrail, we're not touching that guardrail. Everything right now slopes at a, like a one or two percent from the guardrail back south down towards the curb, so any disturbance that we do to put in this sidewalk is going to flow back down towards Cedar Street, we'll be putting silk, filter baskets in those catch basins, but nothing is gonna flow north back towards the wetlands, so from a wetland disturbance standpoint, it's relatively simple plan, relatively simple presentation, and that's really, that's really the gist of what we're doing out there. We are requesting that the commission have this done via administrative approval, and, and that we can work with Eric directly to, to satisfy any, any concerns. He has, again, because we feel like this is clearly not a significant impact, and it's just something really, because we're only in the Upland Review Area, per the wetlands map, you know, that we're for this board right now.
Mr. Walter, one question. So on the map that's being presented, where exactly is the Upland Review Area, the buffer that you will be encroaching with the sidewalk? Can we have a visual, exactly point that out, what area, it's not along the, the whole extent of the project, but where is that wetland line that the commissioners need to know about?
Well, the wetlands-
Hundred-foot review area, Upland Review Area.
Yeah, if you look at the, the, the wetlands are, are signified on the, on the plan, we're looking at on the screen by a, by a squiggly dash line, if you will, the hundred-foot Upland Review Area, there's a large note on the plan, if you look there, Commissioner, it says-
It's on the screen.
So essentially, what we have is basically between the Amtrak rail crossing and the Connecticut Fast Track rail crossing, the entirety of Route one seventy-five right-of-way between that, those east and west boundaries is within the Upland Review Area.
Even though it's elevated over the Upland Review Area, right?
Yeah, that's correct, yep.
Elevated, yeah.
And I also would point out, obviously, we have a lot of pavement, fill, u-dorphins in there, it's a lot of fill material that's in the URA, in that corridor.
Yeah. So it's not really, does it go all the way from the entrance of the new, your proposed facility? Or, I know there's interruptions there, but it's not really at the entrance that you're in the Upland Review Area, it's when you get between the railroad line and then west of that, that basically is in the Upland Review Area.
Yeah, that's correct, Commissioner, and it doesn't go west all the way to where we're bringing the sidewalk. I mean, if you can see it on this plan, we have a, a series of stationing way in the left, we start at one plus zero zero. That's at Fen Road, so right about at station four plus, at station three plus fifty, that's the drive entrance, that's where you see the sidewalk right there, that's where we're starting our new sidewalk, and if you move over to the right at about station eight plus zero zero, that is, that's the limit of the, of the Upland, a hundred-foot Upland Review Area. That's the western edge of it, and it extends from there east all the way essentially to the, to the railroad crossing.
That's a little off to the map that's off to the right here.
That's correct.
I'll open it up to other commissioners, if they have any questions for Mr. Walter.
So I'll just throw one out there, John Bashan.
Commissioner Bashant.
Yes, thank you, Chairman, and it's not really wetland-related, I don't have a problem with the impact on the wetland, I agree with the applicant, but I would just be curious if there would be a guardrail between the curb and the sidewalk, and it's probably not their responsibility, but I was just curious about that.
No, there's no-
Because it is so, it is so close to the moving traffic, it's kind of scary. I ride on there now, I call it a goat path, but-
Yeah, and what, what we're doing, Commissioner, is, again, working with ConDOT, is we're trying to provide as much of a green belt as we can between the curb and the sidewalk, and in some cases, it's between two and three feet, and, and again, we're working directly with ConDOT, we've had three meetings with them to try to, try to make it as safe as possible.
Yeah, hope someday they put a guardrail in there, because, anyway, that's all I had, thank you.
Welcome.
Any other commissioners have any questions for Mr. Walter at this time? All right, seeing none, the question, who answers the request, if you like to do this via agent approval with town staff? Do any of the commissioners have any objections by doing this via agent approval, receive via Mr. Hinckley? I personally do not, I'm willing to do agent approval on this, it's pretty straightforward, and I think it's minimal impact, if any, to the wetland, and but I welcome all the comments on the commissioners to make that decision.
I concur with you.
Commissioner Bashant?
Yeah.
Okay. Commissioner Paskowicz, you have a, okay with agent approval?
Yes, I concur also that with agent approval.
Commissioner Clark?
I also agree that that's appropriate.
Commissioner Cassa Santa?
I have no problem with an agent approval on this one.
Commissioner Ancona?
Nope, sounds good to me.
Commissioner Turjan?
No objections here, that sounds good.
All right, then. Madam Secretary, may I have a motion to accept agent approval for application twenty twenty fifteen, five fifty Cedar Street, please?
Yes, Mr. Chair, at this time, I'd like to make a motion to allow an agent approval of application twenty twenty dash fifteen, five fifty Cedar Street for a sidewalk in the Upland Review Area.
Thank you, can I have a second?
Second by Commissioner Paskowicz.
Seconding by Commissioner Paskowicz, discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Abstentions, none, the motion passes unanimously.
Thank you, Commissioner Walter. Yep, thank you very much, good night.
I'll be in touch, Will.
Thanks, Eric.
Yep.
Okay, moving on, new business, item five B, application twenty twenty sixteen, six Winterberry Court for a building addition in the Upland Review Area. Owner, applicant, Mr. Patel, six Winterberry Court, Newington, Connecticut, oh six one one one. Will a representative from the applicant please step forward?
And again, I'll just give a, a quick review here, this is typically, all this work is within the URA, the entire lot is encumbered by the URA, there's no wetland on the site. As you can see from the map, typically, building additions come before the commission, so that's why they're here this evening.
Who's gonna speak for the applicant at this time, please come forward? If Mr. Selefski is speaking, you're unmuted.
Yeah, he is muted, I cannot unmute him.
Upper right corner.
Okay.
Better?
There you go.
Yeah.
Okay, I'm sorry about that, I'm kind of dinosaur when it comes to computers, I'm still with a couple cans of Campbell's and so forth. But anyways, I'm the one that's gonna be hopefully approved, I'm the one that's gonna be working on that project.
Okay, so please identify your name and address for the record, please.
It's William Selefski, forty-eight Farmington Ave, New Breton, Connecticut.
Thank you. May proceed.
You just want to briefly discuss this bill, the size, and what you plan on doing.
It's gonna be, right now, there's a deck which is ready to come down by itself, but they want to remove it because they have an elderly person, she's a seventy-year-old female, she's got problems with her knees and hips, and because they have so many sets of stairs there, they want to do the addition, so it's gonna be on one level, which would be our extra room for her, and a small bathroom adjacent, part of that. And that, that would definitely put a lot of, you know, relief on a family that lives there, taking care of her. And I can relate to that, because I had to take care of my mother last three years of her life, so it's not an easy job, so I'm hoping that we'll be able to proceed with this project, and hopefully that lady will be able to benefit, you know, from it.
So Mr. Selefski, I do have one question. Currently, the deck that's there is on an upper level, and this new deck will be at the ground level?
Yeah, no, then, it's all gonna be on the upper level, because it's on a slope.
Okay. I couldn't quite make it out on Google Maps, so, but it will be elevated, there'll be sonar tubes and beams going up, it'll be of the same dimensions as the prior?
Yes. Well, it's gonna, the deck is, it's, I don't know, it's just a mess, but what I, what they need is eighteen feet away from the house, thirteen feet across, because there's a dining room wall, so they want to, but right to it, so in other words, they're trying to maximize the room, because they're gonna have a bed in there and a bathroom, because that woman, you know, she's not exactly ready to, you know, roll around anywhere.
So I believe there's just, as you pointed out, Commissioner, there's going to be peers there, basically, the number of peers he needs to support that, that addition, so that's-
Every six feet, twelve-inch peers, whatever it takes, I've done it many times, so I have no problem with whatever is required.
Whatever building's gonna require for the peers, and that's gonna be the disturbance, is the, you know, the few square feet for each peer.
Okay, I'll have that squared away then.
Well, I have no further questions, I'm gonna open up to the other commissioners for their comments, please.
Is there a way we can have it expedited, because I submitted the paperwork during a time, we had the storm, and also with the mail being as slow as it is, we lost quite a bit of time, and they're kind of concerned about it, because they want to get her in there as soon as possible.
Understood, sir, Mr. Selefski, I understand, so we're gonna open up with the commissioners, any comments relative to the wetlands impact? I open up to, first things first.
Okay.
I'll start off, then.
Commissioner Bashant.
John Bashant. So we're not changing, the footprint, there is something there in that current footprint, correct?
Correct.
It's just now we're gonna have a roof over, it's gonna be an enclosed addition, it's not a deck.
It's gonna, that deck is going out, because it's very cheesy.
I understand, I understand, but in that same footprint, we're gonna have a one-story addition, it's just gonna be elevated off the ground.
Perfect, exactly.
Where does she can go roof over it?
Oh, yeah, yes.
So we're gaining a tiny little bit of impervious, but not much.
Yes.
I honestly don't have a problem.
Okay, thank you. Any other commissions wish to comment at this time? Commissioner Cassa Santa?
Just a quick question about the Upland Review Area, that's all seeded lawn grass area?
Correct, yes.
Okay, thank you.
Commissioner Laverrier has his hand raised.
Commissioner Laverrier, hello?
Hi, Richard Laverrier. Just for the record, I want to disclose that six Winterberry Court is across the street and down one from me. I don't feel that this, that I do not feel that the close proximity to my house would in any way impede my, my ability to give an impartial opinion for this, but I didn't want to disclose that for the record, okay? Question, how far is the, it's a little unclear, I mean, I get the idea generally from the approximated scale, but how far is the back edge of the proposed structure from the wetland?
Can you give me a minute, I will scale that and give you a number.
Looks like fifty feet. I'm trying to figure out where Winterberry Court is.
Then the pepper-
The other side of the wetlands is Wethersfield.
All right, just for the record, Commissioner Laverrier, Commissioner Turjan is seated for you tonight, I didn't see you at the beginning there, so there's no worry there. Commissioner Laverrier, Mr. Commissioner Turjan will be seated for you.
The, the proposed building addition is approximately thirty-five feet from the rear property line, which is the wetland line. The, the proposed building addition is approximately thirty five feet from the rear property line, which is the wetland line.
Sorry, you said, Richard here, you said thirty feet?
Thirty five feet.
Thirty five feet.
All right, any other questions from the commissioners for the applicant? All right, seeing none at this time. How does the commissioners feel about granting agent approval for the applicant for this permit? I, I'm in favor. I have no issue doing this with agent approval. I think it's just more or less remenable impact what was already approved on the site when the home was built. So I'm, I'm in favor of going forward with an agent approval to help the applicant expedite the, the project. So Commissioner Paskowicz, what's your take?
I concur also, and I'd like to help expedite this project because the weather could turn, we don't know, and if it's an elderly that needs help, you know, I'm all for that.
Thank you. Commissioner Clark.
I'm, I'm with you. I agree. Let's expedite it.
Commissioner Bashan.
I agree as well.
Commissioner Castasanta.
Yeah, agent approval will be fine in this case.
Thank you. Commissioner Ancona.
I completely agree.
Thank you. Commissioner Turjan.
I, I support it as well.
All right, thank you. Therefore, Madam Secretary may have a motion to do agent approval for application twenty twenty sixteen six Winterberry Court for agent approval.
Yes, Mr. Chair, at this time, I'd like to make a motion to allow an agent approval of application twenty twenty dash sixteen six Winterberry Court for a building addition in the upland review area.
May I have a second?
Yeah, Richard here.
You, you're not seated, sir.
What do you mean?
Seated, seconded by Commissioner Castasanta.
I second that.
Thank you, Commissioner Castasanta. Discussion. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Aye. Opposed, abstentions, motion passes unanimously.
Thank you very much.
I'll be in touch, Bill.
Thank you very much, Eric.
Same problem.
Thanks, everyone. Thanks very much. Thank you. Okay.
All right, moving on to item six, old business, Internal Rules Committee. I guess, you want to kick this one off, Mr. Hinckley or Sean, Commissioner Bashan?
Sure, sure. I spoke with the town attorney again on this issue. And I had mentioned, you know, after the last meeting that, that Commissioner Bashan would probably be getting in touch with him. And apparently he already had, so Commissioner Bashan and the attorney had some discussion and Attorney Ancona basically reiterated the same thing that he sees no need for the change. And he also pointed out, which was brought up by, I believe, Commissioner Castasanta last month, that something we talk about on one night could be an application the next month or a year later. So I don't know if Commissioner Bashan would like to share anything. But this will be the last night. If there are no other changes to the rules, which I haven't received any, so you guys let me know.
Yeah, I, I.
Commissioner Bashan.
Yes, John Bashan. I agree with the way that Eric put it. I did talk to Ben, Attorney Ancona, and and he did say exactly, put it in almost the same terms as Commissioner Castasanta did. I normally agree with him on most things. On this one, I don't, but that's okay. I'm, I'm willing to go with the consensus of the commission too, so I think that there's no, we're not going to have any changes, so. I don't know how we disband the committee or the subcommittee, but I'll let Commissioner Clark, because she was part of it too, she should have a chance to say something too.
Commissioner Clark, Commissioner Clark here, and Mr. Bashan and I did discuss this and I agree at this time taking into account the town attorney's opinion that it is something to put aside. And just, and disband the committee for now.
Okay, thank you. So this will come off.
Yep, I will remove it. And if in the future you guys want to revisit all the rules, if somebody wants to look at them, feel free and we can move forward.
Thank you for your time. Thank you for this. Moving on, old business, item B, vernal pools. I think we had a meeting last time going over the revisions of the regs relative to vernal pools. I think Commissioner Paskowicz, I think that was your open item for tonight. Is there any comments with the revisions that were proposed? Have any comments from commissioners on that?
Just a comment, Commissioner Paskowicz, can we go around the table and have each commissioner speak one way or the other, so we have a consensus or not?
Well, starting with myself, this is Chairman Sadel. I would, I helped write, I was on the committee with Commissioner Paskowicz, so I helped write them with him, so I'm in favor with the changes, but we're looking for feedback from the other commissioners. We can start with Commissioner Clark, if you like.
I don't have it in front of me, but I did read it between the last meeting and this meeting, and everything looks good to me.
Commissioner Bashan.
I did read it. I don't recall having a problem with it, so I can't recall all the changes or everything that was in it, but I just I didn't have a problem, otherwise I would remember.
Commissioner Castasanta.
Excuse me, yes, I'm, I'm all in favor of the revisions. Percent behind them.
Okay. Then we have Commissioner Ancona.
I'm in favor completely.
Then Commissioner Laverrier, I'll go to you. Have you had a chance to review those?
Yeah, I'm in favor.
Fine, thank you. And Commissioner Turjan, do you have any comments? We get a chance to review them.
No, I, I concur with the rest of the commission.
All right then, so we have unanimous consensus. So, Mr. Hinckley, what is the next step? Can we vote on this this evening, or do we have to go to town council with this?
Yeah, you can vote to send it to council, basically. You don't even have to do that. I, I can develop these and get them finalized for the review process because they actually have to go to D E P first. They have to get reviewed at D E P level to see if they have any comment. And then once I get response from that, then it can go before the commission, so, or before the council. So it could be timeframe wise, you know, it could be another sixty days before any action is taken, because I think D E P has thirty to sixty days to make comment, and then we go through the council process.
Commissioner. If there's nothing more action on that, on the commission at this time?
No, if these are what you're going to go with, then this is what I will get, prepare and submit.
Thank you. Moving on to item A, Commissions and Reports. We go to item A, Agent Communications.
Actually, you skipped item seven.
With that, excuse me, excuse me, I'm sorry.
That's all right.
All the participation and non-agenda items, each speaker limited to two minutes. My apologies, sorry. Is there anyone online? James?
We have Ms. Foley online, and she's planning on speaking at this point. This would be the point where she would want to utilize the raise hand feature. That's either star nine or the participants window at the bottom of the Zoom application, and there she is. So I'll unmute her and allow her to talk.
Please.
Please state your name and address for the record, and then you can proceed.
I'm Patty Foley. Live at fifty one Crown Ridge, and I believe that I will be speaking to you when we get to invasive invasive plants and so forth. I'm here from the, as chair of the Environmental Quality Commission and the part of the team of, for sustainability in Newington. So I just wanted to say hi. I'm here and I look forward to working with this commission so that we can actually get on the map about invasive species education and so forth. Thank you.
Yeah, I believe she's going to speak when Kathleen speaks about invasives.
Okay, thank you, Ms. Foley. Is there anyone else, James, on the line?
No other public attendance at this time.
All right. Now, moving on to section A, Communications and Reports. Agent Communications, Mr. Hinckley, do you have anything for the commission today?
Just a couple of notes. I did two agent approvals this month. One forty nine Knollwood Road for a gazebo in the U R A. And forty nine Schoolhouse Road for a deck in the U R A. And I just wanted to point out, a commissioner asked me recently, you know, what kind of conditions and stuff do these agent approvals, you know, get? How does that work? And basically, they always get the same ten standard conditions that you issue as a commission. And I can always, as you can, enforce other conditions as well. So it's not like they're getting a free pass. So they still go through the same process. It's just the timeline's just a little quicker than the, than the sixty days that or sixty five days is sometimes required statutorily if you hear before the commission. And, and all these are minor disturbances, the ones that I believe are issues. I have them come before the commission like tonight, the Winterberry Court for the building addition. And obviously, the Dakota Properties one for the sidewalk, so. And in the past, you guys have made allowances to allow agent approvals after hearing them, so that's all that is there. I'm also currently working with twenty three Burden Lane for a shed in the U R A. I'm going to move on now to the Mill Pond Park benches trimming and all that good stuff that was discussed the last meeting. So currently, Parks is going to continue to work under their existing permit for the trimming along the easterly edge of the pond from the bridge at the falls to the other bridge on the south side, along the easterly side of the pond. And they, they will anything that needs to get trimmed will be identified. I'll be out there as well. We'll flag it and they'll do this work probably in the fall and over the winter. Currently, and along those lines as well, they have moved their memorial bench program out of Mill Pond over to Churchill Park, I'm told. So they will not be asking for a modification for the benches. So basically, I don't think we're going to be seeing them anytime soon. And that's all I have to go on that. And that is the end of my comments this evening.
Thank you, Mr. Hinckley. Moving on to item A, B, invasive plants. Commissioner Clark.
Commissioner Clark here. I'm going to read you my report on taking, taking a walk around Mill Pond, and that should cover most of it. On three occasions in August, I walked around Mill Pond with the goal of identifying vegetation. On the first occasion, I was accompanied by Anita Schaefer, and we used the Plant Snap app as well as our general knowledge. The following invasive plants, these are on the Connecticut Invasive Plant Working Group list were identified. Oriental bittersweet, purple loosestrife, Norway maple, European alder, burning bush, multi-floral rose, autumn olive, tree of heaven, porcelain berry, and Japanese honeysuckle. Two native plants, but that can act invasive are riverbank grapes and weeping willow. And not really invasive native, but may be considered undesirable in a public area, poison ivy and poison sumac. I want to make note of the desirable plants because it speaks to, I guess we're not going to be working with Parks and Rec except obliquely, but there are, and when I talk about a location, I'm hoping I can use the same terminology, but I believe when the plantings were done some years ago, the town put in two patches of a plant called red twig dogwood. They're still there. They are located on the east side, so when trimming occurs, these are plants that the town paid for and put in, and they're desirable and they're growing well. And one is located closer to the, the smaller bridge. And the other is located closer to the workout equipment. They're both on the east side, though, so even though we have.
Yes, I have, we've discussed those with the Parks Department. They are aware that those dogwoods there and they are not to be touched.
Excellent, thank you. And of course, we have all our nice big pine trees on the east side. I also toured the pond perimeter on separate occasions with Councilor Bedrako. And on another occasion with Commissioner Bashan, then we discovered it. The big takeaway finding is the west bank of the pond is by my estimate ninety percent invasive plants. In many cases, multiple species entwined with each other, creating an almost impenetrable barrier. Please note that some of the invasives are mature trees. There's a lot of Norway maples, which I think we look at a maple tree and go, it's a tree, they are an invasive species. So some of what may have earlier looked like a desirable sapling or larger is not necessarily a good tree to have. We also have tree of heaven.
Excuse me, Ms. Clark, Commissioner Clark. So how mature was that Norway maple? What was the diameter of the trunk?
I'm going to say probably the size of my upper arm. I don't know that, anyway, I mean, it's, it's a tree. It's not, again, it's not a, you know, three inch, four inch sapling. It's probably six inches that you, you'd never look at it and think.
It's well established.
It's well established, yes. Actually, the tree of heaven was interesting. There's a tree of heaven on the east side, and we actually couldn't identify it. We had to send with, using our app, we had to send pictures of it to Yukon, and they identified it for us, so. But I think the interesting thing is when we, we hung on tight to that west side of the pond. And the west side of the pond, if we want to control invasives in Newington, cutting that back frequently, which I believe is what Parks and Rec wanted to do in the first place, is something that I hope we work with them to permit and encourage that perhaps. Because it's just, it's just a tangled mess, and I know that he was encouraged to do, you know, he was worried about the geese. I don't think a goose could, I don't think a goose could make a nest in all of that stuff, but it is, as I said, I think the word is impenetrable. And that side is, is pretty much invasive plants. There's quite a collection on the north side and in among everything else, except for those dogwoods. And that's using my limited experience, but the app and most of these are easily to identify. I also plan to conduct similar excursions in some of the other locations in town, like the Young Farm and, and Churchill. And when we talk to, when Ms. Foley comes on and speaks, I'll tell you how that's all going to tie in. So that's my report on Mill Pond. I, so this is related. I made a video with Cheshire, not Cheshire, yeah, I watched Cheshire Land Trust. I ended up working with them and we filmed a video that was probably thirty minutes long where I was the narrator about invasive plants found on their property. And it was quite fun to do. We certainly have the expertise, I think, with M C T V. And it might be a nice project for us to use, and we'll tell you how in a few minutes. And so I, at least I've seen how these things can work. We've been talking about invasive plants for as long as I've been on the commission and haven't really done anything. So I think this is a good project for us, and I'm going to let Ms. Foley talk about Sustainable Connecticut.
So just before we do that, Ms. Commissioner Clark, I do want to rewind. I didn't want to interrupt you, but about Mill Pond, what is the next step about, at least where we have the permit to do the trimming on the east side, correct, Mr. Hinckley? So how can we incorporate some of the findings from Commissioner Clark into your project?
The, the, the permit, I believe, as we discussed, for the trimming, that was ancillary to the benches that they got approved at that time, and the prior seed commission pushed them a little harder on some trimming, so I think that's the only reason that came into play at all. I believe that the work of the trimming of the trees and whatnot can be. I believe that the work of the trimming of the trees and whatnot can be done under the general permit. I don't believe that they need to have a separate permit to do this work on. We're not clear...
I thought it was going to do concurrently. I was coming from the mindset that we could do this concurrently, not another permit or, but that's where I was coming from.
So if, going forward, if Ms. Clark would like to send her report to me, I, first I can distribute it to all of you, and then I can also forward it to the Parks Director and see if they want to do anything, and I could put some caveats in there, like, hey, you know, if you guys want to go in and do some invasive work here and do some removal, I don't think you're going to, hey, the commission, I'm not trying to put words in your mouth, will say, it's not going to require a permit. We can identify what needs to be removed, flag it, and you guys can remove it, and there's not going to be, you know, any pushback from you guys. You know, you may want them to plant something else in its place. I don't know, because obviously, we're not going to take that whole bank down and make it wide open. That's my thought. I don't know how you guys feel about it.
I'm going to open up to other Commissioners at this time, based on our feelings from Commissioner Clark's report. Commissioner Bashan.
Couple of things, John Bashan here. I think I concur with Eric that it probably is, probably does fall under the general permit if they're not doing clear cutting, which we know they're not doing clear cutting. I just wanted to clarify one thing. We keep saying the east side and the west side. And as I pointed out earlier, it's really, it's really three-quarters of the circumference of the pond is what... And again, this may not even matter now if they could work anywhere that they want under the general permit. But I'm just want to keep, when we keep saying sides, it almost sounds like it's half and half, but it's nothing near that. It's between the bridges in one direction, it's one-quarter of the distance, and the other way, it's three-quarters of the distance. I just want to point it out, may not mean much, but it just, just to clarify the terminology.
Thank you. Anyone else, Commissioners, wish to comment about the Mill Pond study?
Mr. Chairman.
Commissioner Casa Santa.
Yeah, all I'd like to add is I fully endorse Mr. Hinckley's plan going forward and the approach to Parks to see if they're interested in doing something there. So I would urge support for that.
I had one more item to add.
Commissioner Bashan, thank you, Commissioner Casa Santa, Commissioner Bashan, please continue.
Yeah, and we discussed, I discussed this, or we brought it up with Kathleen, and I talked to the Parks Director last night about it, too. Not that it, you know, locked anybody in, but I would like to see, and I think Commissioner Clark agrees, some kind of a master plan for the pond. You know, we're talking about a big, you know, we're going to be doing a project at the, at Mill Pond. At least we're looking into it right now. So we only have two major ponds in this town, and Mill Pond's obviously the main one. We should have some, you know, invest a little bit of money and get a consultant and tell us what's the best way to manage that pond, you know, with the plantings and the water. We know it's not pristine, the water quality, of course, but the area around it, I would think that, you know, I don't know who we can compel to do that, but I think it's a good idea to have some, maybe some help with that.
Chairman, if I may?
Yes, please, Mr. Hinckley.
I can certainly bring this to the attention of Parks. I know they're doing some other studies for, you know, a future complex there or something, I'm told. So I can certainly ask to see if they can incorporate a plan for the pond in that, or, you know, or even a separate plan sooner than that, because I don't know when this other plan might be coming. But I believe it would start with Parks, because they basically maintain the park, and we can see if there's any kind of funding available to do a master plan, so to speak. No guarantees, you know, just like giving them the list of invasives. I mean, I can certainly bring it to them, and they may say, yeah, we don't have time, or I'm not going to spend the money, but I will certainly broach it with them.
Thank you. Any other comments, Commissioner Clark?
I've been speaking with Eric on this topic, and I actually contacted DEEP to see if DEEP had any specialists who would come to a town and help evaluate. And the answer was no. There's a couple other state departments that, for a fee, can take a look at things, including Connecticut Agriculture Experiment Station, but I didn't pursue it any further because I thought Parks and Rec was, to be honest, I wasn't going to take it any further because I thought we were going to have a discussion with them. I guess that's not happening. And I just feel strongly about it. In 1999, I believe, is when the pond was dredged, and when we had our conversation in, was it 2016, with Mr. DeMayo? No, it was 1/1717. His comments made it sound like the way the dredging took place was, I want to say apocalyptic, but that's probably the wrong word, that that shouldn't have happened, and it's not a natural pond. And, and as we know, a wetland is a wetland wherever it came from. And after hundreds of years, I guess we're calling it a pond. But the question was, there was a plan at that point that certainly somebody was supervising, and I don't know if dredging is the right thing every X number of years, and a pond that a lot of silt flows downstream to end up in it. But I just, again, I'm just very, very concerned about the health of the pond and not just the plants on the perimeter. And I agree with Mr. Bashan, who has mentioned, who mentioned at that meeting of January 17, 2017, you brought it up, John, at that meeting, and recommended getting some kind of a specialist to come and look at the pond three and a half years ago. So I thank you for that.
Commissioner Paschke, here.
Mr. Paschke, please.
Yes, listening to Kathleen, Commissioner Clark. Gregory Bugbee has been the primary contact person at the Connecticut Agriculture Experiment Station at the Hamden Office, who has been doing evaluations on ponds and lakes in Connecticut exclusively over a number of years. I would just give maybe a recommendation if you want to contact him. He's a, he's a very, you know, he's a person of knowledge and background and actually going onto ponds and lakes in boats and looking at invasives and everything that we've been speaking about. So that's what I have to give.
Alan? I wondered what the gentleman's last name was?
Yeah, it's Bugbee, B-U-G-B-E-E.
Thank you.
And the first name is Gregory. He can be found in the soil, he's in the Soil Department for Analysis.
Okay.
His mainstay, aside from that, because I've listened to him at lectures at Lockwood Plant Science Day, and he's very knowledgeable. It's a person that I would recommend there. So that's it.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
There's no other comments? Commissioner Clark, please proceed to the next portion of your presentation, Eric.
Thank you. I thought that was a worthy direction to take this meeting in, and I thank you for that. So I will also say that I am going to be attending the online version of Connecticut Invasive Plant Working Group Biennial Conference this year, and I'll, that's in mid-October, and I think it's before our next meeting, so I will report at that time. And I'll just give you a short version of, so the movie that I thought we might be able to make, as far as invasives, may speak to what Ms. Foley is going to speak about, and part of Sustainable Connecticut is to produce projects, and one of the categories is invasive plants. And actually, one of the categories is working with invasive plants with your Parks and Rec Department. So it would be a very notable thing that would get some recognition for Newington and using a template that is provided by the state. And now I am happy to turn the floor over to Patty Foley.
Hello, everyone, and again, I'm Patty Foley, and the Chair of the Environmental Quality Commission. Sustainable Connecticut got put into our lap on December 10 of 2019 by the Town Council, and said that the town would like to take part of this certification program. And here we are. So let me tell you a little bit about this, and then we'll get on to the, I feel like the fairy godmother, because I got a whole bunch of answers to some of the things you just brought up. Sustainable Connecticut: Communities strive to be thriving, resilient, collaborative, and forward-looking. All very important words here. They build community, that it means that the town doesn't do it all by themselves, but they involve the community, and it helps generate local economy. They equitably promote the health, well-being of the current and future residents, and they respect the finite capacity of our natural environment. It's a voluntary certification program and for Connecticut municipalities. It's independently funded, grassroots municipal effort provides a wide-ranging menu of best practices. Municipalities choose sustainable Connecticut actions, implement them, earn points, and become certified. As of, I think it was a couple days ago when I was making some notes for tonight, of the 169 towns and cities in Connecticut, 112 towns and cities are signed up. Of that 112, 48 of them are already certified at one or two, one or two of the levels. This organization is just over three years old, and when you get certified, you're certified for only three years. Currently, there is eight categories, and that's going to be expanded come January 1st. It is a very fluid organization that continues to change. The two tasks, the two levels of certification is to receive 200 points for a bronze level, or you go to 400 points for a silver level. And we've been hinting about maybe we'd get a gold level, which would be some point higher than that. Well, how does invasive plants actually work into all of this? It's very simple. There is an entire section, like I said, there was like eight categories, which is being expanded. And the category two is about well-studied land and natural resources. Some of the items in that area are open space, drought and municipal water management, educating on water conservation, managing woodlands and forests, green grounds maintenance. And so the one we're going to speak to tonight, invasive species education and management. Okay, now, one other thing that's really important about Sustainable Connecticut, and for us, because we are now involved, is that there's funding available. So when you were talking about not being able to have funding or get funding, there is quite a bit of funding available for certain projects, big or small. I mean, there's a small matching program. You can do something as small as $100 and look for matching funds, and also something that is tens of thousands of dollars. And there's quite a few people and organizations standing up to look for these projects. So keep that in the back of your mind. But let's, let me pull up my other item, all right? So what they have, and I've given this to Kathy, and hopefully she'll have this and maybe be able to get it out to all of you, you can have a chance to digest it.
Ms. Foley, can I interrupt you just for a second?
Of course.
So what is Newington's certification level at the moment?
Zero.
Nothing?
No, actually, we got five points.
Okay.
We think, well, we haven't, it hasn't been approved, but we have done an event, and it should qualify us for our five points.
Okay, so what's the closest level, bronze?
Bronze is 200 points.
So we've got a ways to go.
We are planning to submit. There's only two times a year you can submit. You can submit in April and in August. Well, obviously, April is just too dang close. So we picked August, and I'm glad we did because the new rules go into effect January 1, and it may affect some of the things that we're working on or will be working on, so that it gives us a time to modify anything that we look at. But it requires not just you and I and your commission and my commission, it requires actually town departments, and it requires us involving our community. And Kathy's got a really good thing, and that's how I found out she was doing something on invasive plant, when I saw the video for the Cheshire Land Trust, and it was really good.
So just to be clear, this is a state program, these 10,000...
No, it's not a state program. It's an independent program.
It's a what?
It does not belong to the state of Connecticut. It is an independent program.
So who funds these projects, then?
Really generous people.
Oh, it's like an endowment of some sort?
Yeah, I don't, I haven't pulled their 990 to find out. But I'll eventually find out. Right now, I'm just worried about how to get points.
All right.
All righty. But I will, I'm sure I'm going to learn more about the actual organization in and of itself. Okay, so the invasive, each category, like I said, open space, it has a multitude of categories, subcategories beneath it. So we're going to stick just with invasive, invasive plants at this point. There's three categories, and the first category, and I'm going to verify if there's three sections. All three sections have to be completed to receive credit. And it's to examine the regulations that the municipality has so that it is not unintentionally supporting the use of non-native species and eliminate invasive species from lists and acceptable plants. So it's like, okay, what do we, what do we actually do here, if anything? And then this is, "Embed invasive species management practice into the grounds maintenance practices for the town, not just around the pond, but all over." And they also talk about wide use of herbicides and pesticides. And the last item of that group is to educate the municipal groundskeeping staff on invasive species, practice management, and so forth. The next group is talking about, let's make it, it's a really short one. It's engage in invasive species management on a municipal property. So get a description of what is being done, put it together, and that's all done. Keeps it really simple. And then the third section is on the municipal website, so our town website. A invasive species education resources provided for people to know. Are there links, even if just to an external source outlining species identification and removal techniques? Can somebody go here and find this information? And then of that same section is host or sponsor an educational workshop. You can teach people about, one, how to, what they are, but then how to remove them safely. Now, most of Sustainable Connecticut, most sections have to be done within 12 years, 12 months of of our submission. So being the fact that it's next August gives us plenty of time in which to take care of getting these things done, and then they'll be in our August package. We would like to hope that way. But these are some of the items that really put you on the map. And part of it was, I just went over something the other day, sent it into Town Manager, and said, well, how come I can't get to this? There is actually, I forget the name of the organization again, who has a booklet out that's about four years old about invasive species and plants and so forth in the Connecticut River Valley. They're a separate nonprofit. Well, I searched to see if it was on our website. I did, I found it on the library under Home and Garden as a link to their booklet. But only because I was looking at this and coming to speak to you tonight did I even think about asking about some of this information, which I think is really important, because homeowners don't know. They see something cute and adorable, and maybe they like it, and then they find out that it's not the best thing to have in their yard or as a municipality on our places. There are two actually additional things that are coming into, which may have a little bit, is a green ground maintenance program, which should affect our species plants. which may have a little bit is a green ground maintenance program which should affect our species plants. And also there's a new one coming up starting in January, talking about pollinator pathways, pathways, excuse me. Because these are all important things about our environment. So with that mini overview, I'm willing to take questions or comments. Whatever I don't know, I'll get you an answer.
Is there a website where this information you were just elaborating on, is that somewhere on the town website somewhere?
Not yet. I'm working on it, but you could go directly to Sustainable Connecticut. And that website is sustainablect.org, O R G.
Yeah, I've been on it. It has a lot of good information about a number of different topics, like you said, but especially invasives, which are something that you guys can deal with.
Yep. I mean, there's a whole bunch of areas that you all deal with because you're the Conservation Commission.
So I was looking forward to seeing how this video that Commissioner Clark, are you working with her on this video? Can you explain just a few words about that, how we're going to get some points? But if Commissioner Clark puts this video together, say of Mill Pond or Stanley Park, is that the goal here? I thought that was the focus tonight was to see how that meshes with your, with your commission.
What I would say is that we're just in the beginning of this because I just made this video for Cheshire Land Trust like two weeks ago. And Patty saw the video and we just started talking. And that's when I found out that our Sustainable Connecticut application, we could do something similar to what Cheshire did. So we're just in its infancy. I guess my question to our commission is, do we have the blessings of our commission if we do something like this? Do we get to say, and I'm representing Newington Conservation Commission? I think that's all that I would ask because at this point in time, if we need help, I would send out feelers to anybody on the commission. And in fact, I'd also like to expand to you, if anybody on the commission would like a tour of Mill Pond Bank and I can show them what I was talking about, I would like to extend that to other members of the commission. So it's kind of, that would be what we probably start doing a video of or at least try it and play it back and see what it looks like. So that's where we're at. I was thinking that what I just learned that I could do through Cheshire Land Trust, I'm offering to take the same newly learned skills plus what Patty has through NCTV and being a videographer and Sustainable Connecticut, all three of those things could come together and create something.
Nice trilogy, yeah.
Yeah.
It's what we're looking for is when you look at this particular certification, it is really high level and it searches down not just to departments or to the commissions or to committees, but really we have to reach out to our public and bring them in so that we educate everyone.
Commissioner Paschke has a question. Commissioner Paschke has been waiting.
Oh, sorry.
Yes, I certainly give my blessing to Commissioner Clark on the efforts that she's concentrated on the invasive plants for quite some time. And I'm happy to take a visit with her and any other persons around Mill Pond and have her point out her background on what she's seen and what she suggests. Thank you.
Okay. We certainly have my endorsement, Commissioner Clark.
Thank you.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes, Commissioner Casa Santa.
Thank you. I just, Commissioner Casa Santa here. I just wondered if as a commission, if the commission would be in favor of maybe an endorsement of this effort. Give it a little additional gravitas. Just a proposal wanted to throw out there. And speaking for myself personally, fully endorse what Commissioner Clark is doing in this effort.
So when you, Commissioner Casa Santa, as far as endorsement, how do we publicize that endorsement? Would you do that on the sustainable? What's the good?
Yeah, I mean, I would imagine drafting some kind of a statement of support for the, for the efforts. You know, saying we fully endorse what, what's being attempted to be done here. And, you know, one of those type of statements. Just saying we support the work that's being done with this initiative.
Now, where would we publish that, on their website?
Well, I mean, right now they can use it on, you know, as part of the website. You know, it would be part of our minutes. So it would be publicized that way. I think it would be something for them to promote on, on their website.
I got a question. Who is their website?
Your website?
I'm sorry, can I answer that? Because I'm the one who said their website. You're the impression that you were planning to start up a website?
Now, it should be a webpage on the town's webpage.
Yeah. Okay.
Included in the town since this is all about the town of Newington and the citizens.
Absolutely. All I'm saying is we could just give our support, you know, if you felt that would be helpful.
Absolutely.
All I'm recommending is as a commission, we give our support to what you're trying to do and you can publicize that on the webpage.
Yep, we'll take it web there and we're going to take it social media. We're going to take it to NCTV. So in between regular scheduled programming, you can put up a slide or two and say that the Conservation Commission supports this and moving forward, please contact whatever to know, to find out more about it.
Fantastic.
Yeah, I mean, we had, actually had a program set up with the library who arranged a talk that we were going to do on recycling until COVID hit and canceled the whole deal. So we're in the process of attempting to reschedule in a time where doing a meeting and a, or a seminar or whatever is a little more challenging. It takes a little more ingenuity to do it, but it's doable as we go forward. So yes. And therefore also give good press to your particular commission and make people realize what, what it is that you do there.
If that's all I had, thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Casa Santa. Is there anyone else?
Mr. Chairman, Max Turgeon?
Commissioner Turgeon.
Hi Patty, thanks for joining us tonight. It's nice to hear from you. So I just have a question, a clarification. So you said there's a, there's a bronze and silver level. And once you reach those levels, you're eligible for grants, is that correct?
No, you're eligible right this minute.
Okay.
And the grants are helping you get your points. Let's say you had to hire something and there was no budget, you would put together a small proposal. This is nothing fancy dancy. But you could put together, you put it out there, you see what you, you know, what's available and who's, who is looking to do support in that particular area.
Gotcha. Thank you for that clarification.
Yeah. It's a really good question. No, it's from day one you can start applying. And it doesn't matter, you individually, Max, will go and apply for one of these loans in order to do this because you live in a, now, a town that is searching to get their certification. This is an amazing organization that has put this together. And it really requires a lot of coordination among everyone, which I find very interesting.
Okay, is there anyone else? Any commissioners, any questions for Ms. Foley? Is that a hand up, Commissioner Clark?
No, I was coughing.
Okay.
I think her cat wants to say something.
Cat can't vote.
I just want to say thank you to John Bashant. I just want to say thank you to Patty for all her efforts. It's a lot of that went over my head, I'll be honest with you, but I'll have to, I'll have to pay some more attention to it.
All right. Does that conclude that discussion then?
Thank you all very much for allowing me.
Thank you, Ms. Foley, for the presentation and the time. All right, that concludes our agenda. Do I have a motion to adjourn?
No move, Commissioner Turgeon.
That's moved by Commissioner Paschke, which can I have a second?
Cat, this is voting second.
Seconded by Commissioner Casa Santa. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Have a good night. Thank you for everyone's waiting.
Take care, everyone.
Cool. Cool.